Lots of sunshine today with afternoon highs from the-
Came on a budget session.
Oh geez. Good afternoon. Today is Monday, May 12th, 2014. It's 3 o'clock and this is the Moscow City Council Administrative Committee meeting. With me, my name is Tom Lamar. I'm on the Moscow City Council. And with me, we have Walter Steed and John Weber, also from the City Council, and Gary Reedner, the City Supervisor. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the April 28th minutes.
Having read the minutes, I move that we approve them.
Okay.
I was not in attendance, so it's up to you.
Okay, I will agree with their approval, so we will have them approved. The first item on the agenda after that is the Kalia accreditation with David Duke, our city police chief.
Good afternoon. One of the frequently asked questions I have is why Kalia and what are the benefits of Kalia? So instead of me sitting here and talking to you, I have about a seven-minute video presentation I'd like to show you, and we'll kick it off.
That would be good. And could you say for the audience what Kalia stands for?
It's the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies.
Okay, thanks.
Why your agency and community will benefit from becoming a Kalia-accredited agency.
If you're the CEO of a public safety agency today, one of the most proactive steps you can take to demonstrate your agency is well-managed, well-trained, and well-prepared is to lead your organization through Kalia accreditation. The Kalia accreditation process is a management model. Once your agency has worked its way through all the applicable standards and has created the policies and procedures, the written directives, it presents you, the CEO, on a continuing basis with a blueprint that promotes the efficient use of resources and improved service delivery.
The process of accreditation is not only important from a management perspective, but also from the perspective of law enforcement officers, telecommunications, training personnel, victim advocates, and others. It can impact equipment needs, safety reviews, sound human resource processes, training, and many other areas that make for healthier, safer, and more productive public safety work environments.
Hello, I'm Charlie Dean, Chief of Police at Prince William County Police Department in northern Virginia. The police department has been Kalia accredited since 1987, and our Training Academy and Public Safety Communications have also been accredited in recent years. I've always been a strong advocate of Kalia for a number of reasons that I'd like to discuss more fully. But in a nutshell, Kalia provides a chief or sheriff a framework of well-established practices in law enforcement and a system of accountability that is periodically tested through audits by outside professionals.
Some of the benefits of accreditation are: proven management system, greater accountability within the agency. Kalia standards give the chief executive officer a proven management system of written directives, sound training, clearly defined lines of authority, and routine reports that support decision-making and resource allocation. Once implemented and institutionalized by the agency, the system is reliable. The CEO will have confidence in the agency's ability and employees to understand their duties and trust the outcomes. A reduced officer risk and liability exposure. Activities involving public safety personnel are the source of a significant percentage of lawsuits. This can be particularly worrisome for public safety agencies that are operating under outdated or non-existent policies and procedures. The adoption of performance standards, which serve to reduce risk exposures associated with these activities, is strongly encouraged. That is why Kalia's internationally-recognized accreditation programs are extremely desirable to city and state attorneys or government risk managers. One of the best defenses against lawsuits brought against a public safety agency is that the agency was acting properly in accordance with established written policies that meet Kalia standards, and that the agency was reviewed by an independent, outside team of Kalia-trained assessors and has been accredited by Kalia. One of the documented benefits of accreditation is the financial incentive offered by many insurance providers to Kalia-accredited agencies. Liability insurance providers have determined that Kalia-accredited agencies cost them less money, so they offer financial incentives in order to encourage agencies to become Kalia-accredited. Accredited agencies are better able to defend themselves against civil lawsuits. Also, many agencies report a decline in legal actions against them once they become accredited. Liability and risk exposure articles written by Kalia agencies can be found on the Kalia website at www.kalia.org. Staunch support from government officials.
Hello, I'm Bruce Beckman, a City Council member-at-large in Littleton, Colorado. Before being elected to council, I served the community as a division commander in the Littleton Police Department. I have been part of the accreditation process, and I've watched how it has benefited our department and the community. I believe it is important, as an elected official, that citizens have confidence and pride in our police department. I often hear how proud they are to have an accredited police agency serving them. Our department is recognized for excellence.
Accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials are more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. A city manager commented at an accreditation hearing: Accreditation has strengthened the relationship with the city and the agency. It has also given city officials an accountability that didn't exist before the agency embraced the process. Increased community advocacy. Accreditation embodies the precepts of community-oriented policing. It creates a forum in which law enforcement agencies and citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronting law enforcement and provides clear direction about community expectations. An active community and agency relationship has proven to reduce crime rates, increase awareness, and accountability. A comprehensive, uniform set of written directives. Accreditation requires an agency to institutionalize its directives, policies, and procedures. This is one of the most successful methods for reaching administrative and operational goals while also providing direction to personnel. Kalia accreditation standards provide the necessary reports and analyses a CEO needs to make fact-based, informed management decisions. A prepared program is put in place so an agency is ready to address natural or man-made unusual occurrences.
If you didn't have a system of regular review, you could find yourself out of balance as it relates to policy and practice. So from just a policy point of view, I think it's a very valuable program to have.
Kalia standards enable public safety administrators to strengthen existing procedures while simultaneously creating a solid foundation for the agency's future. The accreditation model must be embraced by the CEO for it to be successful. Kalia clients have stated that accreditation has brought their agency into the contemporary public safety arena. They have suggested that before accreditation, they did not have strategic training, operable equipment, sound administrative processes, or access to employee resources. Kalia accreditation assists in an agency's pursuit of professional excellence.
Well, thank you for watching that. That covered most of the bullet points in the information sheet I provided. Just a background is Moscow Police Department became accredited through the Idaho Chiefs of Police Association in 2002, and we currently meet all those standards that the Idaho Chiefs hold up, and there are 98 standards at this time that we follow. A little over a year ago, we looked at national accreditation, which would almost double our standards and our policies. We put that into the budget, but it was eliminated based on the cost. It costs $10,100 just to apply for the accreditation. Working with Kalia, one of the chiefs, International Chiefs Conference, I met with some of the staff, and they provided information on a waiver application process. So I looked into that. Lieutenant Frye was assigned to write the initial application waiver letter to Kalia's agency's program support. Didn't think that we would get it because only 3% of all those agencies that apply are approved. Well, come April 4th of this year, we found out that the 21 Board of Directors approved our waiver fee and offered us to apply through their program, but because of that, we do have to provide some physical support. The first support is that we have to pay the half, one-half of the upfront assessment fees. That is providing room and board to assessors that come here that are part of the audit process. So for their travel and expenses, we have to provide it, and Kalia sets a standard of $5,500. So if this is accepted, 30 days with signing the letter, we have to provide a check for $2,750 to Kalia to come on board and start the process. During the next 24 to 36 months, which they give us three years to apply and then meet the standards, then we, once we are ready for the onsite audit, then we would pay the other half. Currently, right now, I'm projecting that within the next 24 months, so within budget year 16 or budget year 17, that added money would need to be included. On top of that, then there's a reoccurring annual fee that they charge us, a little over $4,000. That $4,000 each year pays for the next three-year assessment. Once we're assessed every three years, we're re-audited, and we would have to pay travel and expenses, so that, those monies go into that bank to start paying for that. We also pay the membership fees and then part of the software cost that comes with the program. When I looked into the software, they do give us what they call a program that's Power DMS Lite. It's just the basics that lets us access through the web to access the policies and take all the best practice and standards off the website and use it within a regular filing system, paper filing system. Checking out what they call Power Standard, Power DMS Standard, that is a paperless process where we can take the standards and then build our accreditation files within the web-based server that they provide and use that. And there's an additional cost of a little over $1,100 a year added to that. What they requested, and then we checked into Power DMS, the software providers, they would like the first three years upfront cost paid as far as the accreditation process, so we would have to come up with $3,200 in addition for the software over the next three years. So that is the additional physical standards that they would have that currently we did not have budgeted. As far as the $2,750, I have additional funds that I could save in our travel and meeting money that we will not be sending our lieutenants to certain conferences here that I can redirect as a higher priority, since I feel this is a higher priority to use those. And then I've talked with our IS Director, and he has said that he has some unclaimed funds that he might be able to direct toward the software to get the process started if the council decides this would be a program you would want us to join. And I'm open to your questions as far as anything from here.
Chief, are there any other Idaho law enforcement agencies that are part of Kalia or accredited by Kalia?
Pocatello used to be, but when their chief left, they lost interest in continuing that because that's how we became accredited through the Chiefs Association. The chief there was the chair of the standards through the Idaho Chiefs. And when he left, Pocatello did, there are only currently 5% of all the 18,000 law enforcement agencies in the United States that are accredited now. So it is a benchmark program that I would state would be one of our goals if you're looking at branding, branding our police department as one of the best of the best if we meet these standards.
Great. John, you saw your hand.
Yeah, thanks, John. Chief, in the thing that was just made, it mentioned reducing the cost of liability insurance. Do you have any idea what that cost might be reduced?
Hi.
There will be no reduction. ICRIP doesn't, as far as I know, offer any special rates to, if you're certified in certain ways. I've never, certainly it's nothing that Sean Sullivan, our agent, has never told us that special. We participate in a risk reduction program every year that yields us 10%, Stephanie, reduction if we all participate in some training, but I don't know of any reduction.
Maybe 5%.
5%, excuse me, reduction.
Chief, you know, kudos for pursuing this. I'll say that right up front. I guess I'm a little questioning as to why no other state agencies are accredited through this agency. You've mentioned Pocatello had been because of their chief's interest. And then there's a, what was the percentage you said nationwide?
Nationwide, 5%.
Okay. That seems low. Is it a high bar to clear? Is it too expensive for people? What, can you, it's just a little bit puzzling because from what's presented both in our packet and on the, on the screen, it seems quite admirable to go after it.
It's a, it's both of those. It's a high bar to clear. When we first came accredited through the Chiefs Association, that was a two-year process, and it did cause some staff time as far as dedicating that to bring our policies in accordance. It's also cost prohibitive because, as you say, upfront costs are very expensive, and then looking at a $4,000 a year cost plus the software may be prohibited to the elected officials, saying that, is it really worth the bang, as you say, for your buck or the value for the dollar? I have a short letter here from a chief out of Missouri that I could read, highlight some of the reasons he did, if you would like to listen to some of his comments.
Please. Thanks.
He's from the city of Blue Springs, Missouri. It's right outside Kansas City. And he said, "Kalia accreditation is not as, not an easy process. However, accreditation is a valuable one, and we consider it a central one. Verifying that all policies and procedures meet national standards provides confidence that potential liability against my personnel and city have been reduced." He was a chief, he was a brought-in chief from two other agencies, and he got, he received accreditation through both of them. And he comments, "In each, in each agency, being accredited proved that we have attained a level of excellence while finding efficiencies that help provide better service. The real benefit for the Blue Springs Police Department is the day-to-day focus on ensuring we do things the right way that accreditation requires. In addition to the obvious benefits: liability protection, organized training programs, consistency, and fairness in policy, the knowledge that maintaining accreditation best practices place our department as one of the elite and is a source of pride for all our community and our personnel. Many agencies and many chiefs spend time reacting to brushfires when they should be focused on long-term planning, organization, maintaining high-quality service for the community. Through our Kalia accreditation process, we focus on being the agency that provides consistent, quality service over time and anticipates the future." Chief Wayne McCoy.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like a pretty good thing. Walter?
Okay, and, and the $2,750 that's due at this time, should the council move ahead, you can find within your current budget-
Yes, yes, sir.
-is what you said. And then you would work to budget in future years to cover the cost you've enumerated.
Correct.
Okay? And you've got the manpower to devote Lieutenant Frye to-
We've, we've appointed Lieutenant Frye as accreditation manager. He's approached other individuals within the department that, as you say, have confidence and enthusiasm for this program. It will make it succeed, and it'll be through their team that'll bring this forward.
Gary?
One of the things when the chief brought this to me was, number one, what was the initial cost? Obviously, when you're offered a waiver of the initiation fee, but you have to pay a site visit fee, that kind of perks your ears up a little bit. Wanted to make sure that that was, there was value to the city for that. The other thing was, do we have the manpower to be able to do that? Asked the chief if it was something that we were going to take, you know, we aren't really fat with personnel at this point. If we are doing some things for this, it will take away from other duties. I was afraid that that would reallocate resources. Chief assured me that it's a quality control thing, certainly their practices that we should be involved in anyway. Third concern I had was the cost of the software and the fact that they want it paid upfront, which is $3,215. Certainly, we can find that amount of money in information system, software. The continuing cost, that's three years upfront, the continuing cost of about $1,100 a year, it's a significant amount, but if it assists the department in maintaining up-to-date policies that are catalogued or compared to national standards, then that makes some sense, and it'd be a preferred way of doing it. And at this point, I mean, the chief's familiar with it. I'm not as familiar, obviously, and my thought would be, it seems like something to move ahead with, get an assessment. If it turns out that it is not a long-term solution, or we decide that perhaps it's too rigorous or doesn't deliver us what we need in the long run, we can reassess at that time.
John?
I think I'm, probably speak for a lot of people in this community in that we've got a good police department, and we've got a very proactive and at the same time reactive when necessary police department. And anything that we can do that will get as many of the situations that they have to deal with under some sort of management control, that is a defined control as far as the training, as far as procedures, I think is nothing but a good idea. There have been a number of news reports about some of the other police departments in the area that have not done this, and they continue to have problems. We haven't had those problems here in town because of the way the department is running, and if we can use something like this to make sure that we don't have those problems in the future, I think it's probably a pretty good policy for us to take. And although it does cost some money, I think it is worthwhile, as Gary says, to at least try it on, and if the shoe fits, then we'll buy the other one.
Walter?
Question for the chief, and then one for Gary, and then a comment. The $5,500, is the site visit cost, is that-
Correct.
They're wanting the same.
That's the most.
We're not talking, we're not talking $5,500 and then buying motel rooms and food.
No.
Okay.
They put the $5,500 as the highest. If we do get the software, we will probably reduce our onsite visit by at least a day because they can go onto the website and check our policies before they even get on the plane here, and then they can set up a plan of assessment that would be a reduce. But if there is less of a fee than $5,500, then that second bill will be reduced by that amount.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. I understood that we weren't talking $5,500 plus room and board. Question for Gary. Having listed your questions you originally have, you're a believer?
I'm comfortable. Anytime you can have, as the chief mentioned in his memo to me, we are engaging, if we stay on schedule, engaging in the strategic planning process. This will assist us. Part of that, our assessment will be some sort of performance management, which will allow us to gauge how we were doing against national and regional standards. This seems like a good thing to do, to be able to gather those standards and gain best practices. So the cost isn't, isn't, it isn't small by any means, but it's certainly not outrageous. The $4,000 renewal fee along with the annual software fee, if it delivers what it promises, then I think that would be a good bargain for the city.
Now, if I may-
Go ahead.
Now, we've got two officers under grants-
Yes.
-currently that we would like-
We need to start funding.
-to plan to budget for-
Yes.
-and keep, keep those positions filled.
Yes.
And that's cranked into your thinking on this.
Yeah. Again, this, we're talking $5,000 versus the cost of two full-time personnel, and we'll be addressing that in the budget this year as we indicated we would last year.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm a believer, so.
Well, I think this, this seems good. I, I had another question, and now I can't remember what I was about to ask.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it was, it was close. I don't know. I think, I think it's fine. I mean, it was just a clarifying question that I had, but I, well, ask that later. Okay.
Do you want to, is this something that you want to bring to consent or regular?
Well, if we have a really light council schedule, we can have it as a regular item, and we can see the video again, or it can, I'd be happy with going on consent.
This does not go before Public Works Finance today, does it?
No, it does not.
So you've got two council people that would not have heard it.
Although one of them's sitting here.
That's, that's why I counted two. He's number three.
Oh, okay, you're, you're thinking about, well, will Wayne be back?
Yeah, he'll be back.
Okay.
I wouldn't have any problem with it going to consent. They certainly can pull it, and I think Tom's got a good point, running the video again at the council meeting probably wouldn't be a bad thing.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll discuss it with the mayor as well.
My question was about human resources and preparation for the site visit. We've talked a little bit about human resources and the amount of time to set it up. Is it, do we need to spend a lot of time between now and the site visit that might be in a month or a month after we pay the first-
For human resource.
Setting, I'm sorry, for preparing for the site visit of the-
Site visit, year two down the road.
Oh, year two down the road. Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're 24 months out.
Oh, so they're not even looking at this thing? They're not looking at our policies in the next-
No. No, the first step after we initially sign, and you give me authority to sign the MOUs which have been approved by legal-
Oh, then I'm not worried.
-is to do an onsite-
I don't have that concern.
-ourselves. We would do an onsite assessment.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Mr. Chairman, I need to run to a real estate closing on behalf of the city.
Oh.
So Bill will be handling the rest of the meeting today, and we will, I'll be back for Public Works.
Good job. Good job, Lieutenant.
Thanks, Gary.
Well, I feel much better to have you here.
Nice job getting the, the fee waived. That's great. Okay, so the next item on- Thanks, guys. See you later. The next item on the agenda is the proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter III of Moscow City Code to, in regarding to the allowance of mortuaries within general business, motor business, and neighborhood business districts with Bill Bellnet, applying both roles of Gary and Bill.
I'll sit here for the moment, if that's all right.
That's great. Thank you.
Just to provide, this is a briefing on a hearing that's going to be coming before the City Council in your meeting on the 19th. I'll provide a little background. Earlier this year, in January, our department received an inquiry about adding accessory structure at the location of the Short's Funeral Chapel, Chapel located on Sixth Street here in city Moscow. In looking at that request, we've identified that the use was not listed as a permitted use within the neighborhood business zoning district. Shortly afterwards, we received a letter from the owner of Short's stating that he would like the Planning Zoning Commission to consider amending the zoning code to allow mortuaries as a permitted use within the neighborhood business zoning district. Currently, mortuaries are only listed as a conditionally permitted use in the central business and the general business districts. It is not listed as a permitted use in the motor business district nor the neighborhood business district. And so the commission decided they wish to look at that, so they have done some research on, on the topic. We also researched how the Short's Funeral Chapel came to be in that location. According to our records, there was a special use permit that was issued by the Planning Zoning Commission back in 1981.
You found records, not just memories?
We found records. What we could not find is a record that that was a permitted use that was authorized to be allowed underneath a special use permit. At that point in time, the zoning district was a neighborhood business district in that location. There were no specially permitted uses listed in that district, and there was one section of the code that explicitly prohibited them in the neighborhood business districts. So we're not entirely sure exactly how that occurred, but that is what occurred. The building, they were previously located in the downtown in the central business district. They relocated to the Sixth Street location.
Right over here.
Yeah, and they relocated to the Sixth Street after that special use permit was issued.
What was there- What was there before they moved out there?
I believe it was vacant at the time, was my, I think according to the record, there was no reference of any other uses there. I know the Circle K was probably one of the first commercial uses that was there on the corner.
Circle K was there, and nothing until, actually, until you got down to where the Nazarene Church is.
Yep.
And there was that area that is probably what would be two blocks long, that had nothing in it. And that's when they put in the church and the funeral chapel.
Great, thanks.
After review, the commission directed staff to prepare a code amendment for consideration, and that's what will be before you coming up on the nineteenth. Currently, the neighborhood business zone allows both establishments to provide clerical, professional, and other skilled services that do not involve substantial fabrication. Examples of those uses are professionals such as doctors, lawyers, accountants, counselors, architects, and engineers, consultants' offices, administrators' offices, beauty and barber's shops, and graphic and photographic studios. The MB Zone also allows for churches, convents, monasteries, synagogues, and mosques. I think after the review, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that they were consistent with the fact that it involves skilled services, and also that they're very similar to mortuaries and funeral chapels, very similar to churches with respect to the buildings and structures themselves, the chapel locations, the parking areas, and funeral services that are often conducted in both.
And beauty and barber shop.
The commission included, they believed that they should be considered permitted use within the motor business district, a change from conditional to permitted by right in the general business district, as well as allowing mortuaries as a permitted principal use in the neighborhood business district. They conducted a hearing on the proposed amendment on April twenty-eighth, and recommended approval to the city council at that time. So, this has been scheduled.
Excuse me.
Yes.
The first bullet, so the commission went further than the request from the mortuary?
They did. And staff will review all the different zoning districts and where this use may or be appropriate.
The request was just neighborhood business.
Correct.
But in looking at it, planning and zoning said it should also be motor business and general business.
Correct. And in general business, it was already a conditionally permitted use, and they felt it should just be a permitted use by right.
Okay.
So, those were the two changes. Nope, you're fine. So, the hearing was held on twenty-eighth, at which time the commission recommended approval to the city council, and has been scheduled for a public hearing before the council on May nineteenth.
Great. Do you need any, do you have any more questions?
Were there any objections at PNC?
There was no testimony received either in favor or in opposition of the proposed amendment.
And did the commission members have any questions that, were they had hesitancy about this?
No.
Is the proposed, the need that the mortuary has that started all of this, it's not a crematorium?
I don't, no, I do not believe so.
If it were, would there be a problem?
No.
John?
The Short's has no plans to put in a crematorium.
I don't know that it would be a problem. I just think it's something different than building a hearse, a garage for the hearse.
Yeah, and that's essentially what they're looking for, but in talking to the owner, he said, no, we have, I think that requires a different set of licensing from the state, and a different set of skill set from the employees, and he said that's essentially not the business that they're in, and don't want to be in that business, so.
And like I say, I'm not saying it's a problem. It just occurred to me that it could take it to a level where people are questioning it.
We have at least one pet crematorium in town now, correct?
I believe the animal clinic has a.
We must, because I.
At least one.
Took a pet, they asked me if.
Right.
Yes.
It used to be when Zimmets had the pet clinic down on Highway Eight, and Logan or something like that, they used to have a crematorium for pets.
I think the animal hospital at whatever, Logan or Harris?
Yeah, the one at Logan and Troy Highway.
Yeah, yeah, that one.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yep, okay. So, I guess we'll see this at the public hearing.
Okay.
I think that sounds great.
Okey-dokey.
On May nineteenth, this Monday. The next item on the agenda is proposed amendments of Title IV, Chapter VI of Moscow City Code regarding allowance of tandem parking, and this doesn't relate to bicycles.
Does not relate to bicycles.
I don't know. Tandem bicycles? That's what I, I just kept reading that, thinking I was talking about bicycles, but it's not.
Take it easy.
I know, I'm excited.
This is actually about, about motor vehicles.
And the bicycle parking racks.
To provide a little background, the zoning code establishes standards for off-street parking, including the number that are required for different land uses, the dimensional requirements for parking stalls, for travel ways and so forth, required landscaping and surfacing. But currently, the zoning code is silent on the question of tandem parking, and that is where you have two stalls that are essentially in tandem, where you'd have to travel through one stall to reach the second stall. But that configuration, while it's not addressed in the zoning code, it's not prohibited, and it's not explicitly allowed, has historically been allowed and permitted by the community development department for single-family and two-family uses only. So, that has been the historical interpretation, even though the code does not specifically state that that is an allowable configuration of off-street parking.
Bill, if I can interrupt you.
Yes.
I remember discussions on new development over the past twenty years sometimes, where staff talks about parking on the street, parking in the garage, parking in the driveway. Can you refresh my memory as to how y'all look at all of that? And when you do it, do you look at tandem parking in the driveway? Or just, paint that picture for me, if you don't mind, so I can get up to speed before you go on with this.
I'll try to do that. So, generally, when we're talking about parking, we're talking about off-street parking, so the parking is located on the private property. We don't allow or consider, we don't consider the on-street parking that may be available as satisfying the required number of stalls that are in the table. So, the zoning code will dictate.
For any zone where there's tables for parking, you don't count the on-street?
Correct. And it's the same table for all zones. It's, the table falls in Chapter VI, which is the supplementary regulations of the zoning code. So, regardless of what district you're within, the off-street parking is required in accordance with that table, with the one exception being the central business district that is exempted from that table. So, we don't require off-street parking in the CB zone. So, Chapter VI will specify how much parking is provided, and that parking has to be located on the private property. Now, there are a variety of different standards that come into play, whether you're looking at residential uses or non-residential uses in some zoning districts. When you look at most all residential zoning districts, where you are providing or constructing a single or two-family dwelling, one of those spaces has to be in a location that could be covered by a garage or carport structure in the future. That just means that that parking space has to be.
Is it will be or could be?
Could be. So, either it has to be outside that front setback. So, you can have a situation where there may be a space where a carport or garage could be constructed outside the front setback, and let's say the setback is twenty feet in that zoning district. If you had another twenty feet in front of that garage door, then we would count that space as well. So, that's what we generally consider to be a tandem parking configuration for a single or two-family dwelling. There are other limitations on off-street parking for non-dwelling uses in certain residential districts. So, if you had a institutional use, like a church or a school, that was permitted by a conditional use permit or permitted by right in a residential district, many times they're prohibited from having their off-street parking in the required front or street-side yards. So, that's just kind of another little twist. So, we're looking at probably parking on the individual property. We have allowed that for single-family and two-family.
Sorry, to be, to be clear, if a car is parked within that setback, if the setback's twenty feet and the car's sitting inside that twenty feet on the driveway, that's...
We count that, as long as it's outside the right-of-way.
Oh, outside, but what I'm saying is, what if it's sitting inside the right?
We won't consider, we won't count a parking space that's off the property.
We don't count there, but a car might be parked there.
A car could certainly be there, depending upon the location, and you have many locations.
You can count those, and do count those.
We do not count those.
Don't count them, but.
If it's not on the property, we won't count it.
On the property, though, not in the garage, counts.
Counts. So, if you can get a parking space that's on the property, but it can be within that front yard setback for a single-family or two-family dwelling.
And hopefully, it's not blocking the sidewalk.
Hopefully, it's not blocking the sidewalk. And the reason why, you have many instances in Fort Russell and older neighborhoods where you have eighty-foot right-of-ways.
Yep.
That go up within five feet, or up to the face of the structure. Those existing situations are, you know, pre-existing conditions. If somebody's coming in today to develop that, you, we do have alternate front yard setbacks we can look at for the building placement, but the parking would need to be on their property and not on the public right-of-way. Not to say that you couldn't have parking in the public right-of-way in an instance that's not blocking the sidewalk, but legally, underneath the zoning code, that parking needs to be on your property, not on the public right-of-way.
So, to jump ahead, and tell me I'm getting ahead of you too far to ask this, but if they have space on their own property, this tandem parking has to do with adding a second car nose-to-tail in that driveway, or something like that?
The gist of this amendment is to recognize the allowance of tandem parking for single and two-family dwellings, where you're talking about a kind of an individual household that can coordinate among themselves of how to manage, how to get the cars in and out of those parking spaces. The request that we received recently, which we'll pick up, was a request to consider the allowance of tandem parking for multifamily residential dwelling projects, where you may be dealing with neighbors trying to coordinate the use of individual spaces and access to parking. So, that's really the large change here. The amendment is proposed to recognize, you know, the past historical allowance of tandem for single and two-family, and actually put in the code that that's an acceptable form of parking configuration. But the bigger issue is really looking at multifamily and considering the allowance of tandem parking for that type of development. As part of this process, we did do research on a number of, I think we looked at eight other jurisdictions on tandem parking, and whether they allowed or disallowed that type of parking. Most all jurisdictions recognize and allow tandem parking for single and two-family dwellings, twin homes, and townhouses, where you can have individual defined parking spaces for a dwelling unit. It was kind of a mixed bag on the multifamily side. Many of them did not allow it for multifamily, or only allowed it in limited situations. However, we did find that several other communities like Coeur d'Alene and a few others are allowing it on multifamily projects, even though their code hasn't quite recognized that. So, it is something that is becoming of more interest as you look at more compact developments on individual sites, of trying to look at the efficient use of property.
So, so the point is somewhat, it's different between find your sister and get her to move her car so you can get out, than whose car is the black Subaru, and where do I knock?
It's probably even more difficult among roommates to coordinate that, but at least they're all in the same dwelling unit. When you're looking at multifamily projects that have a parking space requirement, depending upon how many units they have and how many bedrooms are in that unit, you're creating kind of a pooled resource that everybody is utilizing. When you start to put those spaces behind another space, you know, the ability to effectively utilize that pooled resource becomes a challenge or a concern to us. And so, that's why you'll see some of the recommendations that the commission has made, and why it hasn't generally been recognized in the past for multifamily projects.
Key locker in the hallway?
Yeah. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission examined the topic after receiving the request, and ultimately recommend an amendment to recognize the tandem parking for the single, two-family, twin home, and townhouse uses, and multifamily in limited situations, which I'll get to here in a second. So, the proposed amendment would first, as I mentioned, recognize tandem parking, as we have in the past, for single, two-family, twin home, and townhouse units. So, would allow that as a recognized parking arrangement. It would also allow tandem parking for multifamily uses under the following conditions. And the request that we had received was, it was a project that was wishing to provide garage bays, so garage spaces for tenants to utilize, and have a parking space behind that garage door. And that was really what drove the discussion. So, the concerns, and before I kind of maybe get through each of the individual conditions, really the concerns of the commission were, in a multifamily situation, it is working that pooled resource, and so you have to address the coordination issue of moving vehicles to gain access to another space. There's also a concern that you could have situations where garage spaces could become areas to store personal goods, bikes, and what have you, and essentially remove that parking space from being available for use of the residents of the project. So, essentially.
So, you're saying that if the city counted it per the table, it would then be occupied by something other than a vehicle, which effectively changes the vehicle count?
Correct. The third aspect is providing parking for guests and visitors to the individual site. And some of the site plans that we saw earlier in respect to the request, essentially there were two-bedroom units, and they had a space in the garage, and they had a space behind the garage, and that was all that was available. Now, we only require 1.75 spaces per dwelling unit, so there actually were providing more parking than we would have required, because we're getting two spaces per unit. But if somebody was going to come visit, or come for a Super Bowl party, where would they park? They would really have no place other to park than to park behind somebody else's garage door, if they had that available, which would then block access to that space by where resident, you know, that space was assigned to. And it was just a concern about how this was going to function in a multifamily setting. Ultimately, the commission felt that it would be, they felt it would be good to be able to recognize and grant some recognition of the parking and garage spaces for multifamily residents. That's kind of an amenity that doesn't appear in many multifamily projects, and they wish to try to provide that opportunity for individuals that reside in those types of projects. The commission also felt that having some of the parking underneath the building was reducing some of the surface parked, the impervious areas for the large surface parking lots, so they did like that benefit. And it helps screen some vehicles from view. So, I mean, there were some reasons why the commission wanted to recognize it, but you'll see they're kind of approaching it in a bit of a cautious manner. So, the condition under which this would be allowed for multifamily dwellings is, the first would be, the purpose of the garage design is to provide enclosed garages for the multifamily dwelling resident use. So, we're not doing tandem parking spaces just out in the parking lot. We're really doing it for a purpose, which is to provide garage spaces for the residents and occupants of that structure. The second condition would be that tandem parking spaces, that is, the parking space within the garage and in front of the garage are assigned and furnished for use by the occupants of a single dwelling unit without separate additional compensation. And the separate additional compensation is an issue that we have run into on a completely different project, where there were garage spaces that were furnished as part of a multifamily project. They weren't tandem, but there were separate garage spaces, is that they were offering them for rent for an additional hundred-and-sixty dollars a month to the residents. If nobody's willing to pay that, you effectively don't have those parking spaces available to serve the project. And so, if you build it in for the rent of the unit, to say, you get this garage along with your rent, then that space is being made available for the resident's use. But if you're leasing them the space and that parking separately, and requiring additional compensation for that parking, where that parking is necessary to meet your minimum required off-street parking spaces, that is a concern to our department in that if nobody's willing to pay, you are essentially removing that parking space, just like if you're filling it for storage. And so, we want it to be furnished along with the unit, so that it's not something that is going to be either locked up because nobody's willing to pay for. And the last would be, the garage space would be counted as only one quarter of a parking space towards satisfying the number of required off-street parking spaces for the multifamily use. And we debated this question, if we had a certain percentage that ended up as storage spaces, a certain percentage that people didn't coordinate well on utilization, that we were only recognizing those garage spaces as a quarter of a space towards that requirement. That way, we were allowing, giving some recognition of those spaces, so every four would knock off one space that's provided in the parking lot. But we're still getting more non-tandem surface parking on the project to be able to serve guests, residents, and help with that coordination issue. When you're in a multifamily project, you may have four-bedroom units, and one-bedroom units, and one household may have one car, the other household may have five, and so, you know, they really do tend to use that parking as a shared resource, and we didn't want to kind of take that away. I think the commission was interested in allowing this opportunity, but wanted to kind of approach it in an incremental fashion, to where, you know, we were kind of managing the potential risks that it could have by having parking spill out onto the street or on adjacent properties if it was not, you know, being well utilized in that scenario. So, those are the, those would be the three conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a hearing on this on April twenty-eighth, at which time the NAC recommended approval of the amendment to the city council, and this also has been scheduled for a hearing before the council on May nineteenth.
Do you have any more?
Did, back up one, please.
Yeah.
Did the original requester for tandem parking in multi-unit developments believe that the proposed amendment, as on the screen, would meet their needs?
This works for their individual project that we're looking at. For the project that... For the project that we were looking at that time, if we could recognize about 20% of the garage spaces, they felt that that was going to be adequate, that they could, it allows you to reduce the surface parking by about 75% on the site by recognizing 25% of the garage spaces. So it allows them to do a more compact development, and they recognized the functional concerns or questions that we had, and so they were comfortable with this, and it worked for the project that they're working on.
John?
Well, in my time here in town, I've been involved in both of these situations. One in a duplex where there was a very long carport. And at the time, my roommate and I both had more than one vehicle each, and we would park one and a half underneath the carport and then one behind the one and a half. And it kind of worked out okay. And then I rented a garage from a fellow to park the same car in, and he had a house and he rented the house out. People didn't want the garage, and so he rented the garage to me. So these things, I think, work out pretty well as long as there is a defined relationship. And we're defining that right now. So I have, I have no problem with, with doing this. And then the rule of you can't make somebody cross one parking area to get to another parking area is probably one of the biggest things. They have to be in a line, and you can't have one sitting here and then have to drive across another one to get to another one here. Once you've got a line of parking, that line stays nose to tail, as you put it, Walter, from the structure to the street. And also if someone rents the apartment and they're not going to use the parking spot in the garage, if they wanted to rent it out, they could sublease it. And it still would not affect, because it's only 25% of the parking space.
So-
So anyway, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
So public hearing on the 19th?
Public hearing, 19th.
And I guess there's not much for us to do now, except just to-
Wait till the 19th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, not sure I fully understand it. I'm not, my, one question I had and didn't ask and not going to, I'll answer it myself, why should the city care? Well, it's a spill over or spill out onto the street.
Right.
And if we've got a traffic situation or something and decide we want to have no parking that side of the street, and they've been parking there, all of a sudden the whole thing falls apart because they got nowhere to park anymore. Where if they're able to provide our required parking on-site, then we could strip that parking with less concern about upsetting everything other than what they had grown into, I think. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, so those are the decision-making items. We now have a couple of reports. I guess we could do it in the order they're listed, which has Kathleen Burns coming up first to talk about Art Walk. Maybe I was sitting back too far away from the microphone.
She's here, she must have heard you.
She heard me, she's up there.
We're good.
Kathleen?
Hey.
Art Walk.
So I put a little PowerPoint together for you guys with talking points. So just to remind everybody, Art Walk is coming up, and its opening night is June 13th.
Friday, the 13th.
Yes.
It's a ghoulishly good time.
Yes, it is. So this is our little bit of a timeline we've been working off of, like, people always wonder when the market ends, and it never does, but because we start on the market in November for-
It only ends for the public and, and-
Correct.
The public, not for you.
No.
You're always dealing with it.
Yeah. So this is how our Art Walk schedule kind of goes. We start in January, street closure, noise ordinance, forming subcommittees, sending out save the dates, registration packets, and it just kind of goes on from there. These are people that have served on our planning committee this year in the community to work with.
That's great.
Yeah, just various plans, a lot more engagement. It's been great to have Rebecca Russ with the MSI on there because we have a lot of people in their business, and Kim Dahl with the Pritchard, it's been really good, University of Idaho, New St. Andrews. So we've had a real good mix of people. These are the businesses that have their applications in so far.
Is that greater or less than what you're used to seeing at this time?
Um, it's less, but the deadline was last Friday, and we just extended it for one week because we have about 65, and we normally have 82 plus. So people are just, you know, people are human, and some people are late. So we're working on calling people.
There was also a rumor running, there was a rumor running around saying that Art Walk was going to be different this year than last, and they weren't going to accept applications or something. So that probably got out there.
Yeah.
People heard that.
So we're going to be phone calling this week and talking to folks and folks that might not know about Art Walk. And, and this is a list of artists that we have so far, which is quite a bit. And that's exciting. The exciting thing about Art Walk this year is there's different cross-promotion going on. We have promotion on the web, distribution lists in the arts update. We send out copies of Save the Date to different distribution lists. So when I send the arts update, for example, to the Pullman Arts Commission, they bounce it around to their distribution lists. When it goes to the Damon Barn, they bounce it around to their distribution list, so. And then we work with the previous artists and businesses, various community groups. This year, we're working with the Republican Convention for Planning because they're in town at the same time. So there's a potential for 3,000 extra people being downtown. So we want to make sure we're on their program. So we selected the cover piece, and it's Tom Garfield created this oil pastel, which is butte with a view. So now we're going to be doing the posters, the brochure, the sticker for the Houston Morning Tribune and the Moscow Pullman Daily News. So this piece becomes a part of the city's collection, and it is currently in our office and already framed, which is amazing. The music that's been set up so far on Friendship Square is the Arts Commission Band, Diamond Joe, and then the big band, Hog Heaven Big Band, is going to end the night. Let's not forget about the Transit Center. All these sculptures that are over at the Transit Center are now being changed out, and there's been a vetting and a voting going on.
Tomorrow.
Uh, new students put their works on Paradise Path adjacent to the Sculpture Lab. And then faculty and staff on the University of Idaho campus, myself, the Arts Commission, we voted electronically on the new submissions. And then the final submissions for the five plints at the Transit will involve Chuck Saban and his wife to do vinyl selections.
And what happens to the existing sculptures?
Four out of five have been sold, and they go back to the students whose pieces they are, and they distribute them themselves. So the nice thing about these plints, thanks to Bill Belknap, they're pretty low maintenance. We looked at models in Coeur d'Alene, took photographs, worked with the welder in Coeur d'Alene. Wasn't too hard to fabricate, and the U of I has a welding program, and they're able to change them out pretty effortlessly with the Corten steel. So there'll be five new sculptures at the Transit Center in time for Art Walk. So it's kind of big. Then, just to remind you, the vinyl wrap, the call for artists are still out there. The four new locations are D and US 95, Third and Main, Sixth and Main, and Lyon Street and Highway 8. We have about 12 submissions so far, and the deadline is May 19th, and the works will be installed in time for Art Walk.
And that'll give you how many total?
Eight.
Do those stay forever or until they become-
They have about a three to five-year-
Lifespan in the product?
Mm-hmm.
And then you would have them-
Replaced.
Redone by a new artist?
Yep. So the poetry on buses selections were done. This is care of the Moscow Arts Commission, and this is a project with Alexander Teig, who serves on the commission and also teaches poetry at the University of Idaho. So these are going to be reproduced, and they're going to be put on the buses for the week of Art Walk. And then we'll have a poetry reading between three and five at the Transit Center with unveiling of the new sculptures, and then also this poetry. The City of Moscow Water Department does a really big bang-up job with their barbecue. So they sent us a couple of pictures from last year, and they're getting all ready for this year, starts at 3:00. So, any questions?
3:00, June 13.
Uh-huh. Get your hot dog.
Get your hot dog. Be fun.
Start your Art Walk. Any questions?
Thank you.
Do you have any?
No, that's very impressive.
Any answers?
Are there any changes-
You guys might have an answer.
Is there any, what's the program for alcohol at Art Walk?
We're working on it with Mr.-
What's allowed and what's not allowed, and what do you anticipate?
What we're going to encourage is for people to fill out their permit, and then they're going to be directed to Reedner's Office for a potential fee waiver. Because I think that's some of the-
This would be individual businesses?
Yes. Yep.
And you have a question? Did you ever get it answered?
No, I don't have a question.
Oh, I thought I'd heard one.
So there's been some other questions about food, serving food during Art Walk. So we've invited Nancy Becker here on Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
And she's going to do a short tutorial on high-risk food, low-risk foods, and we're sending that out to the businesses as well. And if anybody has questions on their menu or the food risk assessment form, we're going to encourage them to come to Thursdays.
So I've, I've had an ongoing question about Art Walk.
Go ahead.
We currently in Moscow require alcohol to stay within a particular place where somebody's getting their permit.
Where it's being served.
Where it's being served. I've been in Art Walks, the perfect person, maybe, and maybe this will be a really fast answer.
Yeah.
Because he walked right up here.
This is great.
An answer.
And answered, asked and answered. Okay, so I-
You need to introduce him.
That's, well, I will in a second, but I was, I'm trying to set up the question.
Okay.
So, so we, we have a, I've been in Art Walks in other parts of the state where people actually carry their little cup of wine or beer or something from one business out onto the sidewalk down to the next business, and they just keep going, and they don't have to chug their wine in the one place and then move on to the next place or whatever it is. They just kind of stay with their thing. The flow. So Rod Hall is our city attorney, and he's here, I think, to answer my question and probably shut down the idea.
I was anticipating your question.
Okay.
Your question of whether in Moscow you-
Could, right, could we do such a thing? I, I'm not sure if this is something that is restricted by the state of Idaho or if it's restricted by the city of Moscow.
No, most alcohol control is going to be city ordinances, other than licensing and distribution of alcohol. Moscow City Code does not allow alcohol in city right-of-way or in the city streets. The only place they carve out exceptions are in-
Open containers.
Open containers, basically, is in parks with a permit and a pass with a resolution. So we don't have the ability to do that. I mean, you could change, if you wanted to do public policy, to allow that. Probably a lot of arguments, you know, against that.
Sure, I, I, yeah, and I've been thinking, you know, if we were to look at this, it would be something that would take quite a significant amount of conversation, but I, I've been also thinking that if we were to do it, Art Walk being in June when most of the students have left and it's a more controlled-
Community.
Community population situation, that perhaps that might be a doable thing. It might be a reasonable conversation to have, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you were talking about. There's probably not a whole lot of communities that allow what you were just talking about to be able to walk down the street with an open-
Yeah, and I, okay, so the-
New Orleans?
Well, we're-
Las Vegas.
Is that down by Boise?
Yeah. The experience that I had was in Sandpoint.
In Sandpoint?
And maybe that was incorrect interpretation of the law.
That's incorrect. Sandpoint does not allow that.
Okay, so I was watching all sorts of people break the law in Sandpoint, I guess.
Kathleen actually got information from Sandpoint. Their ordinance does not allow that.
Okay.
What they do is they allow it in a controlled, in a park.
Sorry, Sandpoint, I didn't mean to ruin your fun this year.
Well, they, they allow it in a park, in a designated area like-
This was at their Art Walk in downtown Sandpoint, from one business to the next on the sidewalk. So I, I'm sorry.
Sounds like lack of enforcement.
Lack of enforcement, then.
We do have a public park down, I mean, Friendship Square would be considered a park, whatever it means, so we could actually carve something out there.
Well, I was just, if we would ever have a discussion, I can just imagine what the Mardi Gras people would say.
Let's do it in March.
Why not us?
Yeah, their question would be, why not us?
Sure.
And it would be hard to, now, that'd be one heck of a party.
Yeah.
But it's not one I think that the city of Moscow wants to sponsor, and-
Or allow.
Or allow. Yeah, well, if, if we allowed it, we'd be sponsoring it. And I think that's probably a good reason that you do have these ordinances against walking around with a beer or a glass of wine in your hand.
That's great. Well, I, and again, I was thinking that if we were to do something like this in Moscow, June, when we've got a reduced population, that's not focused on maximum consumption of alcohol in as short a period of time possible, I was thinking that might be a good test. But it was just the beginning of a, of a thought of what that might look like. But it sounds like we're already shutting that down. But it's something that I think we might think about over time.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we'd do this for 2014.
But we might want to revisit it for 15.
But it's something that might be, it might be a reasonable thing to include.
Yep.
Over time.
Yep.
I'm sure it would take a lot of discussion.
Right, exactly. And maybe that would affect our eye crimp rates, I don't know, but-
I don't know either. But any other questions?
Anyway, I just, that's where, that's the only question I had.
As usual, Kathleen, good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks for, it'll be a fun, fun evening.
Yeah.
Afternoon and evening.
It's going to be great.
Yeah, that's terrific. I hope the, you know, I, I hope the businesses stay open longer than they did last year because it would be really nice to see a, a longer, more engaged Art Walk than what we've had in the past.
This town does tend to close down early.
It likes to, I mean, I can understand why somebody who's been at their job all day wants to just take off, but it'd be nice if the downtown places could stay open a little longer.
So let's encourage them.
Let's hope that happens.
Okay.
Thanks. And our last report is the city entryway beautification project update with Bill Belknap.
Just a quick report, because I probably haven't heard about this project for a few months. As you may recall, the city council set a goal to develop improvement plans for the city entryways by 2014. And so that was adopted in the 2013 FY14 council goal-setting session. We began that effort last year in July. We went through an RFQ process and selected Welch-Kommer as landscape architecture and civil design firm to assist in the project, and we formed a steering committee that began meeting in August. August 20th was the first meeting of the steering committee, and we've had five meetings since that time. The steering committee worked diligently through August, September and October and November, beginning with some field work, go out and visually assess the corridors, identify their impressions. We identified eight sites that then were good candidates for actual improvements, two on each of the corridors, on the, the west, north, east and south entry corridors. And we began and tasked the consultant to do preliminary concept designs on those eight sites, which was completed in late November or early November, presented to the committee on November 19th, at which time we had some communication from ITD that they had some concerns with some of the designs and wanted to take some time to look at those and provide us more detailed comments. And we do have a member, we do have Ken Helm- And we do have a member, we do have Ken Helm is on the steering committee where has been attending the steering committee meeting, meetings as a representative of ITD. At that point in time, we were working to get the preliminary concept designs out to a public open house in early December before the holiday time period to solicit public comment and input on the designs. Uh, ITD asked us to hold off on that event so they could review it first. They were concerned that we would be presenting something that they would not accept and didn't want to have expectations raised on some of the, uh, concepts. Uh, we've, after the holidays session, we finally were able to schedule a meeting with the permits committee on February 20th to talk through the concerns that ITD had and they indicated they would give us, follow up with us shortly after that to give us their, the kind of final determinations. And we've been working over the last three or four months to try to get to that, um, point and I think we're pretty close to getting there. Uh, we received some final comments back, uh, late last week and, or late the week before last and, uh, we reconvened the steering committee on Wednesday of last week to kind of regroup, um, update them of what we've been doing over the last four months and working with ITD on some of the concerns. And the concerns from ITD's perspective are largely focused on clear zones and that is kind of that edge of the, that area from the edge of the lane to the shoulder side. There are specific standards where you don't want to have fixed objects and trees are a fixed object of, of conflict at the moment. Um, many of the improvements involve the planting of trees, um, both on the edge of the roadway as well as in, uh, existing and/or proposed center median islands. And so we've been, um, talking over the last four or five months, trying to understand what flexibility there existed within the state's guidelines and standards and, uh, what would be acceptable to the state. Ultimately, we, I think we've come to a resolution, uh, on all the individual sites. We'll be having to remove some trees, um, from some center median locations and adjust and remove some trees from other shoulder locations and, um, make some other minor adjustments, but I think...
In, in the plans?
In the plans.
Not on the ground.
Not on the ground.
Correct, that's right, in the concept plans.
I'm hearing chainsaws.
We're not going out, not going out firing up chainsaws. Um, there, there are a large number of trees, utility poles and other obstructions that are in the clear zones today and ITD does not feel that they can or desire to permit new ones being added to what exists already currently. So in the concept designs, we'll be removing some of the proposed tree locations, adjusting some others, and so we're in that process right now of, of adjusting to, to try to meet the clear zones where we can.
Bill, um, do those clear zones, um, relate as well to a central business district area? So like, say, Jackson with trees right on, between the sidewalk and the...
We've been trying to be able to distinguish between those areas that are 25 miles an hour and less in the state highway system, which is predominantly in the downtown core, and those areas that are higher speed, you know, 35 to 45 and beyond, um, out in the outer areas. And ultimately, our goal was to try to get to a reduction of the clear zone in the downtown core area. We had worked through, you may recall, the proposed sidewalk project in EMSI, the old Daily News building, where we're going to be removing the on-street parking, putting, pushing the curb line out, um, widening the sidewalk and adding trees out at the curb line. And in that project, we negotiated to get to a six-foot clear zone, um, there. And so we had anticipated we'd be able to replicate that in areas of similar character and speeds and volumes. So that was kind of, was kind of our anticipation. What we were informed from ITD was that as a one-time exception that they would not permit, um, elsewhere. And so that's where a lot of the conflict arose, is that at the time that we discussed EMSI and that project and the reduction of the six, of the clear zone from 12 feet to six feet, um, we made it clear that we wanted to, to do this in other locations in the downtown core. And, um, I think after, after it's been approved, ITD feels that maybe they shouldn't have approved that and don't wish to approve any other situations like that in the downtown area. The, the difficulty for us is that we traditionally would like to see the tree lawns on the lane side and the sidewalks behind so that you have that buffer for the pedestrian, you've got snow storage for snow removal activities, you're not burying the sidewalk. And that's the kind of, and you have just a much more pleasant pedestrian environment. ITD's clear zone standards drive you in the opposite direction. And so because they are required under their standards to have 12 to 14 feet of clear zone from the edge of the travel way, that pretty much prohibits the opportunity to get trees in between the sidewalk and the highway system.
Yeah, it seems like they really need to work on this.
And their standards are predicated upon 40 miles an hour and even though they have a parenthetical ability to consider adjusting it at lower speeds, they don't seem particularly inclined to wish to do so.
Yeah, they need to, it seems like they really do need to do that because it seems like they're working at odds with municipalities where their state highways are.
And...
And some of their, their, uh, within the clear zone, those hard objects, some of those are traffic boxes that we're wrapping up with, with vinyl, that Kathleen's wrapping up, so I mean, literally they've cut their own stuff in there too, so we...
They, they do. It, it's, it's a, it's a tension between trying to protect the traveling public and reduce fatalities on roadways that occur with collisions of, in fixed objects and the type of environment that communities are trying to create in the downtown areas and even beyond the downtown core. And there are areas, as Walter mentioned, the table ends, it says 40 miles per hour and less, and then based upon the traffic, based upon the traffic volumes of that roadway, the clear zones range. And in our volumes in the areas that are 40 and less, it would dictate a 12 to 14-foot clear zone. The Highway Design Manual does state that in urbanized areas that are constrained, you can reduce the clear zone down to a recommended no less than four to six feet. And that was kind of what we were anticipating we'd be able to do in the downtown core. And actually, projects at the South Cuplet, the North Cuplet, Llewellyn, um, are all kind of in that 25 mile an hour condition.
Yeah, just between the couplets.
And, and so we were anticipating we were, we would be able to utilize that standard in those locations. And ultimately, that's, that's not been the case, it's not been District 2's determination. And so, um, at this point, we need to, we need to get the project to conclusion, you know, that still is probably going to be a point of conversation between the city and ITD and, and it may be, you know, among our legislators and others to, to look at what can be done to try to adjust what our rural highway standards when they enter into an urbanized area. And, and that they, they are kind of counter to the types of communities that we're trying to achieve and what can be done to adjust that, those regulations. And so that's, I think that's the conversation that, that's going to be obviously longer duration and, and I don't know what the outcome is, but for the short term, we do need to bring this project to conclusion, at least on the concept design phase. And so we're making those adjustments to the designs and we'll still be able to have impact and, and improve the appearances of these areas, you know, and this is just concept designs, we're not even to the construction yet. But that has certainly been one, one challenge that we've faced. So at this point in time, we are working on modifying the concept designs. I didn't want to show the old ones since they're going to be different, uh, as they come out. We'll report on those here when we have them available. We are targeting to do an open house, um, meeting on May 29th. Uh, that's, we're trying to get it before the public schools let out, we're kind of rushing into the summer season here. So we're going to do an open house session where we will share the concept designs that have been developed. This will be the second open house we would have done for the project. The first one was kind of introductory idea and looking for locations where people felt improvements, uh, were, um, necessary. This will be showing the eight concept designs as, as well as there were about six other recommendations from, um, the steering committee that were presented to the council during the completion of the Phase 1 of the project. And so we'll, we'll share those at that session and solicit public comment. We'll then take that comment back and probably leave it open for a couple of weeks, post the designs online, allow an opportunity for online input. And then we will finalize and consolidate those comments, look at final adjustments to the designs in, in early to mid-June and probably coming forward to the final report to the council in about August.
Thank you.
With, with, with four to six months of not very successful negotiations with ITD, the chairman of the steering committee has asked staff to move ahead.
That sounds good. I, I think it would be, uh, helpful if in, within our report or within our plan, we, I don't know, create a shaded area that says, while not currently approved by ITD, we believe that ITD should have a, you know, a 25 mile an hour, you know, area recommendation with, with the appropriate, I mean, you know, they, I think ITD should be understanding, you know, pedestrian, uh, high, high pedestrian traffic areas and, and the need to do things a little bit differently, so.
Yeah, it's...
I think that's, that would be nice for our report to reflect that and perhaps will help steer state policy a little bit, at least. I mean, it's shaded in that this might not be able to happen because of current policy, but the intention of the City of Moscow would be to make this better.
Part of the problem is that their current standards were only recently adopted by the legislature.
There, there were two things that changed. The Highway Design Manual changed. Previously, the curb was, curb line, if you're in a curbed environment, was considered to be an affected deflector and so your offset was only 18 inches.
If you're going 25 miles an hour, that might be true.
And, and so the clear zone standard was reduced to 18 inches in an area where you had a curbed environment. So that's why we have a lot of what we have down there today.
Yeah, right.
The Highway Design Manual's been updated to state that at speeds greater than 25 miles an hour, they don't work very well as a deflector. Well, okay, we said that maybe meant that at 25 and below, we could consider that to be a deflector. That in combination with the Design Manual's recognition that you can reduce clear zone to four to six, four feet, you know, to, down to four to six feet in an urbanized area, again gives them some flexibility of interpreting clear zone in those areas. But ITD was not, they were more concerned about liability that somebody were to hit one of our trees 20 years from now when it was mature and large and insured, that the clear zone recommendations underneath the Highway Design Manual would be 12 to 14 feet and the IDAPA regulations that were recently adopted last year prohibit trees placement in the clear zone. The combination of those two would create liability for the entity. And so I think that was really, um, their fundamental concern at that point. So anyhow, I think we'll continue conversations with ITD on the topic for future discussions. You know, I think this will not go away, this conflict between their desires and our desires, but for this project, we need to move forward and get it completed. So, um, look to see reports on the designs coming up and, uh, open house on the 29th.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.